Sleep. So I think twenty three months I'll say go back and do it.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a dear.
Right every day.
And it depends on if you're exercising.
But anyway.
But yeah. It doesn't, nothing lasts for.
A lot of supporting. To have an excellent conversation and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's.
They're supposed.
Yep.
Uh.
Yeah.
They can.
It was just.
Sort of.
So.
A lot of their.
Oh, my.
And um.
Should have used.
Come in.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. I love what I just.
So anyway.
It's not a process.
Developmental.
You know.
And they.
And your.
It's a lot of natural. They've had been through this for like forty years.
In their.
It's a really a competitive.
Um, yeah.
I don't really think so.
Change. Not too bad.
If you're not. Not a wrong change.
They're gonna say this.
I mean.
So.
I was gonna say not enough to vote for me, but.
This is the, this is enough. I'm totally good.
Pete.
Okay, so I'm on the township homepage right now. And so you go to government. So I'm hovering over the government here.
More government.
I need to try it.
In a great way.
That's.
They did.
And she's my first today. I like the cool weather.
Wow.
It's not right.
Yes.
This is all our board's questions right here. We're going to go with lady commission. The.
But if you've had this.
Do some.
Spending.
You can.
I want to get out of your shoes.
If you have.
It's.
Drink it.
There's. It's. Some gallons.
It was worth it. I pretty much.
The second, another day to.
I've.
Try this up.
Yeah. And.
I exposed.
It's tough to dry that off.
Yeah.
We'll celebrate it.
So our staff are. But basically, all we're doing is putting you in the system. And then you're.
All right.
Yeah, we're ready.
I go, I think so.
It's relentless, but it's very. It's not true.
I'm a.
He's.
We.
Let's see, I think one by here.
It might be a.
So.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, you'll write that in the next.
Oh, yeah. We might be. So what did you know you really picked up?
Um.
Well, the December eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Delta Township Planning Commission to order, everybody, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your secretary, include call the role, please.
David Holland.
Here.
Rachel.
Things up.
Here.
But McConnell.
Here.
You speak on. All right, I got you. Mark Muddery.
Here.
Mike McMetta.
Present.
Winter Bradley.
Here.
But Weldon here. Vice Chair Marion Proctor.
Here.
And Chairman Doug Kuzinski.
Here.
We are all present.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
Support moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five regular meeting?
So. Support.
Moved and supported, any discretion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Uh, there are six listed items of correspondence, uh, all in reference to uh, the public hearing that will be coming up. Uh, from Mark and Kelly Fesh, April Morris and Marjorie, San Mantha Reels, Deborah Weldon, Logan Simmons, Glenn and Judy Agit.
Mr. Chair, if I could please add, we did, or I received one more email from a Tanya Belding this afternoon. Um, so I did print hard copies and delivered it to everybody here. Um, I've offered them to members of the audience. If anyone doesn't have one or wants one, please raise your hand. We have a hand.
One. One thousand.
One.
So I just want to make that point. And then just as a reminder to everyone, all of the um correspondence that's been submitted thus far goes with this project. So when this goes on to the township board for action, all the correspondence I've received thus far, including this one today, will all be packaged and sent just like in the way it is in our meeting packet tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, there is no old business. So we're on to public hearings.
What's that?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess, yeah, it's, uh, no, public contents are down there, so. Uh, so we're on to uh, public hearings. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This was secretary.
Read. That new business variance PV two zero two five dash zero zero four H Living Properties.
No, just.
You're the wrong.
And this is for tomorrow. Uh, zoning.
Uh, to throw.
Okay, the. We're looking.
One.
Are you?
Zomi. Passed out to Zomi.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, but the comment is still in there, right? That's part that counts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, this is.
I, I think.
See, this is the.
What's going on here?
Got that.
That's correct.
Yeah. This is the rezone. It's tomorrow.
Yeah, so, all right, there, excuse me, there are two, one, it sounds like the zoning board appeals agenda got distributed, so please, don't look at that. Okay, we're here at the planning commission meeting, so does everyone have the planning commission agenda in front of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
The one you sent.
Yeah. Okay. So that's what we're working off of tonight.
Okay. Public hearing regarding rezoning PRZ two zero two five dash zero zero two, Robert Victoria Worthy, rezon one twenty two point oh eight acres. Unaddressed parcel, parcel number zero four zero dash two one dash three zero zero dash one zero eight dash zero zero. On the north side of West Mount Hope Highway, immediately east of eighty six fifty West Hope Highway. From RB Low Density Residential to AG Agricultural.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll be summarizing the request tonight. Everyone, my name is Peter Menter. I'm the Planning and Economic Development Director here at Delta Township. Uh, and I'll be really representing from the township's perspective, this project for the next couple of meetings. So, uh, the way this is gonna work is I'll summarize the request and I want to make clear what I'm referencing, everything that I'm referencing tonight. If you haven't already, and I'm speaking, and I apologize, I want to speak both to the planning commissioners and to the audience, because we don't get an audience very often, so this is an opportunity for me. Uh, so if you go to the government tab on the township website, I do not know what it looks like on your cell phones, because I don't access it that way. We're gonna go to the government tab, we're gonna go down to boards and commissions and agendas and minutes. And then we're gonna go, this is all organized by committee and then by year. So you'll see, I'm gonna go to playing commission, twenty twenty five. And here's the December eighth, twenty twenty five playing commission meeting packet. We are pretty much a digital world in the, in our local government right now, which is good and bad and from your perspective. But I'll just point out that everything that this group is discussing and referencing tonight is found in this meeting packet. So if you find yourself saying, I don't know what the letter from April and Mark said, it's in the meeting packet. So you can represent after the meeting, let me know if you have trouble with that. And we'll, I'll, I'll help arrange everyone. So, um, and also I am looking at a staff memo that our, our team prepared ahead of this. So some of the details that I'm going over are, are present in this staff memo that you'll find in the meeting packet. So just want to kind of lay that out there so everyone understands what we're talking about. So the, this evening, this is a public hearing for a request to rezone this twenty two acre property that is on Mount Hope Highway. It's currently zoned RB Low Residential, Low Density Residential, which is one of our single family residential categories. It's proposed to be rezoned to AG two, which is one of our agricultural residential categories. So the applicant is here tonight, it's Robert and Victoria Worthy, they own the property, they o- o- operate um, at the reference parcel at eighty six fifty West Mount Hope Highway. They live and then also operate this, and what we'll get into in de- in detail in the future, the Mitten Misfits Farm Annual Sanctuary. So this property is to the east of that. It's an undeveloped parcel, it's been farmed for years, but it's now slated for rezoning. Um, originally, I want to show the map here. It may have one point been considered for extension of this Broadbent Woods neighborhood to the north, but that never happened. So the Worthies bought it in two thousand and six, have been, have owned it since. Okay, so this request is really the first step in what may be a multi-step process. And I want to just kind of provide an overview. Right now, it's proposed rezoning. That is a fairly simple request through the plan. I don't want to make the, make it out that the decision is a simple decision. But the process is simply changing the classification of the property. What that does is, um, not only does it change the actual zoning district, but it also changes the allowed uses that are allowed on the property. So it goes from one set of standards to another, and it's all, and there are implications to that. So different land uses and different zoning categories have different things, like different setbacks, a lot of coverage requirements. We detail a lot of that in our staff memorandum. Um, and provide, you know, provide a summary of all that information, so you have it at your, at your fingertips. So you'll find a lot more information in the staff memo, and please do contact me if you continue to have questions about this. But I also want to kind of set the stage in general, because a lot of the, I've talked to some of the folks that are here in the room. And it's, um, processes like this, where you have a rezoning that comes ahead of a potential special land use permit, can be challenging to consider, because the, um, the natural, the natural curiosity of people is, well, what's gonna come from this? Right now, there is no project proposed. Mr. Worthy may walk you through generally kind of what he has in mind and why the rezoning is being sought. And what he has told us so far is he's working with a, a company that he may be able to expand or enhance. I, I don't want to, I don't want to character it, characterize it for, on behalf of the applicant. But they have an opportunity to potentially enhance their um endeavor with Mitten Misfits. And expand some of the use to that property. He's mentioned maybe constructing a barn, and they had, they do a lot of things out there. So this first step, the rezoning, would facilitate just the zoning part of that. However, um, to actually move ahead with that pursuit, they would need a special land use permit. And we would classify it um, under what's called an agricultural tourism, agricultural slash tu- commercial tourism, special land use permit. There are a lot, be a lot more details coming with that application. Mr. Worthy is aware of that requirement, and he knows that that's the next step in this process for you to get the zoning. They purposely split the process to get the zoning first, so that they can pursue this second part. So there are gonna be some questions tonight that I don't have answers to, and I just want to preface everyone to say that I don't have it either, and Mr. Worthy might not be ready to share that information. Uh, those are questions about number of animals, how the farm operates, where's the barn gonna be, all those kind of things. So if you're here tonight hoping to get answers on that, I'm, I'm sorry, we might not have all those things. Um, but we, we are gonna just focus on the rezoning this evening. The general process for the rezoning is a public hearing tonight, so that's this. Uh, it was preceded by notice. If you lived in the notification area, you got a letter from the planning department saying, come one, come all to the public hearing, which you made it, so that worked. Um, the planning commission is advisory on rezoning. So they're gonna, at the end of this meeting, probably make a recommendation to the township board. Township board takes final action on rezoning, special land use permits, all other kinds of, um, processes through township. So we're expecting that if this were recommended for approval this evening, if planning commission does take action, then we would have it on for next Monday's township board meeting for final consideration and the re, the, well, I should say for introduction. So rezonings, once they get to the board, are a two-step process. They have to introduce it, and then they have to go to final action. So that would actually take place over two meetings. So there's at least three meetings in the public realm that we're gonna be around just this rezoning request. When we get to the special land use permit process, same process. So we'll have a public hearing in this room some Monday night in the future. There would be a recommendation from the planning commission, it would go on to township board, they'll discuss it. With a special land use permit, there's only typically one meeting that the township board has. So to best stay in the loop on this stuff, I encourage you to communicate with me and people in my office and, or come up to me after the meeting. Uh, we're available as often as, as we can be, so please take advantage of that. And then also keep an eye on the township website, but I will do my best to kind of broadcast that as we go through the process, so everyone knows what's, to keep you in the loop as we go. So, all right, that's process. The, uh, so there's a variety of things that the planning commission needs to consider for rezonings, and we're gonna kind of roll through those now. So our future land use map, which again, I think this group knows, hasn't been updated since twenty thirteen. Uh, but we are in the process of updating that map right now. It does designate the subject property in low density residential. Um, I think, do you think that that fits in the mix here? So AG two is also low density residential, so I think that the proposed rezoning does fit within the tw- the twenty thirteen future land use map in that comp plan. Zoning, as noted, the current, it's currently zoned RB, so RB allows a variety of land uses, um, single family developments, churches, daycare centers, schools. And then AG two allows a variety of uses as well, mostly related to agriculture and farming. Uh, but there are other things that are, that are listed, and we, um, we note those in the table, um, so. Bringing that up, I'm not gonna go through the whole staff memo. Oops. Yeah, I got a lot of windows in front of me and talking at the same time. Be challenging sometimes.
Okay.
But there is a table. Uh, one of the me, um, one of the pages in our memo that goes over, compares and contrasts the uses they're allowed in RB versus what's allowed in the proposed AG two. So I'm not gonna take everyone's time to read all of that, but just note that they're on the staff memo.
Yes.
Um, we will, we do know that the project, the parcel itself meets the standard, the typical standards for lot area, lot width, for both zoning districts. So there's not, non-compatibility there. Buffer zones, there's no required buffer zone between RB and AG two, however, if the applicant does pursue this agricultural, commercial tourism, special land use permit, please, uh, note there's a one, a one hundred foot, we call it an open buffer in our zoning ordinance, but it essentially means you could draw a line one hundred feet, um, in the property, and there's no activity within that hundred feet interior to the site. So that could be buildings, parking, whatever. There's nothing gonna be allowed in that one hundred foot buffer. Utilities, um, those, right now, the subject, they're, so there are utilities in the area, there's no development project proposed right now, so township engineering utilities department, they review utilities when the development's proposed. And they'll tell us more about it at that time, but for rezoning, that's, it's really not a crucial component. Accessory buildings, there are different standards under RB zoning versus AG two or specifically, uh, farming operation. So we just identify some of those in our staff memo. AG two is, I'll say, more liberal in terms of allowing more accessory buildings. Um, they do have an overall limit of ten percent of the total building. However, um, you know, there are gonna be some complications related to like right to farm provisions. So if this is being used as a farm, and I don't have, again, I'm not here with that information tonight, so I'm not ready to share that. But there is, that is a factor, is, um, there are gonna be right to, right to farm protections. Um, there'll be generally accepted agricultural management practices, so we can talk about in the future about what kind of standards, a farm or farm operation or how to. We have been working with the applicant, I know that he is well aware of all that stuff, and we're in, you know, in his current operation, and he'll be prepared to answer more questions about that, um, at that next phase of review. So the plane, the zoning ordinance has six, what they call findings, that are to be considered for rezoning requests. So staffers provided some basic comment on each of those in our staff memo. We didn't have any red flags for this, so there's nothing that is incompatible with the criteria. I mean, certainly, final word on that is the planning commission and ultimately the township board. But we're not flagging anything as completely incompatible between the two zoning districts. And then we do have a, um, recommended motion, should you consider recommending approval of the rezoning to the township board? And some reasons for that, um, recommendation. The applicant is here this evening, he may be able to tell you some more about kind of what his proposal represents in terms of future uses on the property, and I would encourage you to hear that from him. And then our team is available if you have any questions about the request.
Thank you. Any questions for?
I have a question for Peter. Peter, under AG two, what is the difference between agricultural, commercial tourism and keeping of livestock?
I would say that the, I can pull up the definition if it would help, but the overall difference is gonna be, I, I would like to pull up the definition if you don't mind, give me just one second. But the difference is visiting, um, right now, the way that the, his current operation operates, which is not part of this, the criteria for the rezoning, just to very clear, be very clear on that. Okay, so the definition of our ordinance, the act of visiting a working farm or any agricultural, horticultural, or agribusiness operation to enjoy, be educated, or be involved in agricultural activities. Activities might include, they name a couple, picking fruit, riding horses, tasting honey, learning about wine and cheesemaking, shopping in farm gift shops, farm stands for local or regional produce or hand-gifted gifts. Based on our understanding of the land use, and we have talked with the, the applicant about this, we've reviewed their materials on their website, and she generally are aware of kind of how they operate. It seems to fit into that category. They have volunteers on a regular basis, on a very regular basis, to help with the farm, but they also entertain school groups. And in, uh, are in- interested in doing more of that. So to me, that is what kind of kicks it into this next phase, so it'll continue to be a farm and a working farm at that. But it also has, not every farm has this kind of educational, commercial component, and I'm not, I'm not saying that they're selling anything there, but the, to me, the educational component and really planning for having those groups there is what's gonna require that special land use permit.
Any other questions or comments for Peter? Okay. Seeing none, uh, Mr. Worthy, would you like to speak to your request? Uh, please give your name and address.
Hey, guys.
Hi, I'm Mike Bobworthy. I live at eighty six fifty West Mount Hope Highway, Grand Lax, this is my wife, Victoria. And, um, I, I'll try to answer some of these questions, but if you just look at that map, I mean, we're asking for this parcel uh, that, we, we live in the parcel that's in the, uh, southwest corner, that little corner that makes it not a rectangle, that's where we live. Um, you can see, everything that's green is, is zoned agricultural. And this one little parcel is zoned, uh, residential. And, uh, if you look at the perimeter of the property, about ninety percent of the property, uh, boundaries are against agricultural property, and there's that little ten percent up at the top, at the north side, that actually fronts four houses that are zoned residential. And we're asking this to be moved back to, um, agricultural. We, we purchased our property, the smaller parcel, about twenty, two thousand and three, I think, and we have essentially operated this sanctuary on a micro scale uh, until COVID came. Uh, my wife has been in rescue for forty years, and we had a farm that is now Redwood Condominiums, it was a forty acre farm, uh, forty eight acre farm on Willow. Uh, we got pushed out by the developers on our own terms, and, um, but what happened is, um, my wife rescued, uh, domestic animals, but if the animal control or the humane society came up with a farm animal, we always ended up with it, because we had better facilities, we had barns there. And so when we moved in, we had a horse, uh, two, two donkeys and two goats, and we have had, uh, farm animals ever since we've lived there. Um, so during COVID, uh, my wife had a, a network of friends and family that kind of helped her take care of these animals, just, uh, just as a hobby. During COVID, uh, that network dried up, so she reached out to a, a student group at Michigan State in the prevent program. They came out and they helped her, uh, do chores during COVID. And they said, you know, this, this, this is what we need, uh, we need this kind of experience, because if you don't live on a farm, you can't get large animal experience. And so they said you need to make it for a five oh one C three, which we did, we received that status in, in twenty twenty. Uh, and we did incorporate. So we have been operating since, uh, twenty twenty as a, um, as a five oh one C three, uh, farm animal sanctuary. And we take in senior farm animals that don't have anywhere else to go. These are all animals that would either be butchered or they would, um, end up, um, eh, you know, having to be euthanized if it were not for us to take care of them. And we do have some educational component, we, we do operate, it's a farm. We, we, but we don't hire farm hands, we have volunteers come and take care of our animals. Here's one of our volunteers right here tonight, seeing how things work. Um, about thirty of our volunteers are MSU pre-vet students, so they come out and it's very, at least they're there when school's in session, which is, we're gonna lose them pretty quick. But we have about a hundred volunteers total, and they come from all walks of life and all ages and all demographics. Um, so they take care of the animals, uh, with, under Vic's supervision, and, um, that's how we operate the farm. There, there is absolutely no commercial component to this farm. Um, we have actually, uh, applied from the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries, which gives us a little more credibility. And they say that we cannot exploit these animals in any way, so it's not a petting zoo, it's never gonna be a petting zoo, we're not gonna have a bar there like they do at Horrocks. It is gonna be exactly what it is, a farm. We don't, there's no tourism component to it. Uh, we have maybe two fundraising events a year to get people to come out and spend some money and, and generate some income, because we are a nonprofit. So we're not selling any, when I say that, yeah, we sell cups and we sell t-shirts. Um, she's got a t-shirt on. So we sell that stuff, but it's, we don't have any staff, we don't have, uh, facilities for people to come out and visit unless you call and arrange it first. And so, um, it, it's a working farm, and it's a little bit confused because of the way we operate it. But, uh, we have, we do work with, uh, MSU, uh, MSU bovine and equine and sheep and goats. Um, personnel come out and they take a look to make sure everybody that we're doing the right thing. So she takes a lot of, uh, a lot of counsel from a lot of educated people, she has, I don't know, maybe five or six vets that we work with, and they come out and tell us what we should be doing and what we shouldn't be doing. And, um, we have talked to the state and we do comply for what we're doing with the animals, raising animals. We comply with all the generally accepted agricultural principles at this point, so everything that the state would want, we're doing. And so, um, we have had a foundation approach us and, and with the suggestion that they might be able to build a barn for us. And so, based on the topography of the land, it makes more sense to put it on the twenty two acre parcel than the six acre parcel. We could put it on the six acre parcel, because we won't hit bump up against that ten percent rule, that square footage that they have. But for runoff purposes, and we'd rather have it on the higher ground, and so we, we are looking at doing that. The, the reason I can't come to you with a special use permit request is I don't know what they're gonna allow. And I, so as soon as they tell me, this is what we're going to allow, we can hire somebody to, to put a site plan together. And, um, I, I tried to submit a, a site plan when I just Xeroxed a copy of that and, and drew a little square on it, and that wasn't acceptable. So before we engage accountants or, uh, uh, architects, we need to get that information clear from our foundation. And so the landing question has always been used for farming. Uh, we, we purchased, somebody said when we purchased it, and I don't remember, but I was thinking about ten years ago. Um, and it has, before we bought it, it was in crops, it was corn one year, and it was, uh, beans the other year. Since then, we've planted the majority of it in pasture mix, and we also have had gardens where we grow a lot of different vegetables, and primarily uh, a lot of pumpkins that we can feed to the pigs and, um, we, so that is why we're here. Um, we do have, and let, let me clarify this about the school groups coming out, the tourism component. Um, we had Montessori kids come out, uh, which school is it? One of the Montessori schools comes out every Friday, but they work, they, they, they do farm chores, it's, uh, they come out and they work. We also have groups from like the state police, they, they send people out and they work. It might be a group as large as twelve, it might be a group as small as two, we've had. But they'll come out and they, they do projects that we have, either, you know, clean up in the pasture. So they're not visiting, and they're not, it's. So they're not visiting, and they're not, it's not a petting zoo, and will never be a petting zoo. But they, we do have groups and we invite groups out. We've had a Eagle Scout that put together, he built a duck pond for us as his Eagle Scout project. And actually, his dad did most of it, but he, he, uh, he really put it all together and he collected the funds and he, he put the pond in. Uh, we had Girl Scout groups come out and we, we put up a barn, uh, a small barn, and they painted it. The, the Girl Scouts came out and they painted artwork on it, and they've got their autograph on the side of it. So we have groups come out, but they're not coming out to be a tourist. They're coming out to work. Uh, yeah, there, there's a lot of people that, you know, want, want, want that. Um, a lot of groups are really helpful for us. We have, uh, uh, groups, veterans groups, because we, we deal with a lot of veterans with PTSD. They come out and I work with them because most of those are, um, construction projects. But everybody who comes out, they're actually working on the farm. They're not, they're not being a tourist. Uh, this new barn would alleviate some of the complaints that people had, that, you know, we have a lot of temporary structures. We do, and we, we don't want that. So if we could put a, a new barn together, uh, this barn is not gonna let us expand very much. It's just gonna let us take care of the animals better because we built the barn we have for five animals, and now we have a lot more than that. And we, we have kind of patched it up and, and made it work as best we could. But now we need, we need to make it safer for the animals. We may make it safer volunteers. Uh, we need to make it easier for the volunteers, because this time of year, they have to make sure all the waters aren't freezing, and we want to put a system in that takes care of that. Uh, we want to make it easier to, to feed. We want to make it more uniform because we've kind of just adapted and, uh, repurposed a lot of stuff. The only thing I'll say is that in the goat and sheep area, we have a lot of, that's where we have a lot of structures. Looks like a lot of chaos. We have a lot of, well, calf houses that we bought, uh, from Michigan State surplus. We'll probably keep those because the goats are really butt heads, and they, one goat will stand in the middle of the doorway and not let anybody else in. So all we can do is put multiple structures there so we can make sure everybody has shelter. And it looks a little confusing, but it works. And, um, it is a farm. Uh, it's, you know, it's, it's not as clean. I, we like to landscape it better. We try, we've had groups that come out. We do have groups that come out and plant flowers and try to make it look better. But essentially, an- anyone who is, is expressed any, you know, concerns about this, they live in property that is zoned agricultural. Because everybody around us, except for four houses, and I know two of those said we were good, so I'm not sure what the other two said, uh, on the north side. But, you know, they could, they could do the same thing that they're saying they don't want us to do. And like I say, we talked to, um, extension service, we talked to Michigan State Equine and, um, bovine, and, and we're limited, because we, we don't wanna, we can, we, we want to pasture the animals properly. So we can't put an unlimited number of animals there because we can only have so many per acre. And we're pretty much where we want to be there. So it's not gonna be a huge expansion. It's just gonna be kind of moving it a little bit east, some of it. And then, um, you know, pasturing, essentially, that, that property is all gonna be pasture, because that's what it's planted for. It's, there'll be horses and cows out there. We have a grant to put a, uh, a boundary fence, which would be a secondary fence, to make sure that if somebody gets out of the primary fence, they're still contained, so they don't get on a neighbor's property, because we don't want that. And, and, and I'm, I'm really more concerned with them getting into the street. And that's why everything is, is more toward the back of, of the parcel or in the middle of the parcel. Um, so, you know, we're, we're accounting for all of that. But what I can't tell you is exactly what this is gonna look like. I, I, I can tell you, we want to have it on that L-shaped parcel. And, um, you know, we don't have the check yet. So I, I think the foundation's good for it, but, um, that's, that's where we're at. So I got tired of waiting, we got tired of waiting, and I said, um, you know, let's, let's just get it rezoned and let's get this part of it done. And then when the, when the foundation comes through and we can lock all this in, um, because we, we talked to an architect today, but we don't have enough confirmation from our foundation to even allow him to kick him off. So, um, um, but again, yeah, I've talked to Peter, and I told Peter, we don't need a special use permit. We just need a building permit to put up a barn, because it's just a farm. And he said, no, it's, it's agritourism. And, um, our insurance called, our, our insurance company calls it agretainment. But we're not entertaining. We, we will have fundraisers, but anything we have there, where we have a group of people, um, we, it's, it's, it's raising funds. It, it's raising awareness and it's raising funds. And so I, I would say, we only had one, we normally have a spring and fall festival. This year, we only had the spring festival. We were just too busy to have the fall festival. It brings in maybe three hundred people, and so maybe that's a hundred cars, maybe a little more. And we park them in the field to the, and the property we're talking about, we park them in the, the south portion of that. Uh, we get it all mowed and we get it all staked out with parking, um, and it culminates, but I mean, that's it. That happens twice a year. Otherwise, you have three to five volunteers in shift. So that's, that's the traffic that we have. And I saw, I saw the site plan for the proposed subdivision, uh, when we, after we bought this. It was forty-three houses, forty-three, uh, big McMansions. They were, it was, and so that's the alternative. This, the other thing I wanted to say is that this property was on the market for almost ten years, and they couldn't sell it. Because, um, you know, I had my idea that they just couldn't afford the infrastructure, but it was on the market for ten years. Uh, and nobody bought it and developed it. And so we purchased it so we wouldn't have a subdivision next to us because we embraced the farm concept and, instead of being against it. And so, um, it, it, you know, and you can check that, you can check that with the records. So I, I would be, I, I probably just stumbling up here, and I apologize for that. You guys make me nervous when I'm in from a big group, but let me know your questions and I can give you specific answers.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Any comments, questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I have one. Can you kind of clarify for me where you're currently at? You said your house is in that southwest corner, but where's your current business at right now?
Okay, you can actually, you can actually see it, if you move that cursor, yeah, there it is. All right, that, that barn, that, that second roof is, that's the barn right now that we have.
The house.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's all right there.
It's all right there. We would move everything, uh, uh, essentially due east with, from that, is about where this would move. And that's based on topography, so we get it in the high ground, so we have water migrating away from it instead of migrating towards it.
Okay, and, and our packet, there was a picture that was supplied that looks like, kind of looks like a campground. Is that your, I'm assuming that's your property. Yeah.
I'll, I'll pull it up on the screen, Bob.
Okay.
And I, I want to emphasize, so these are photos that were taken by presumably a resident, but they were sent to us.
I think most of those are off our, uh, Facebook page. This has changed dramatically since then.
Yeah, there's that one.
This is similar.
Small one.
Yeah, this picture is very small.
Well, that, that's taken from the driveway. Yeah, or that's taken from the front yard.
Okay, so that's what you see from the street?
No, that's the backyard.
Oh, okay.
That's the backyard.
Yeah, that's taken from our front yard. Um, it, it, okay, yeah. And that, that looks, that looks out over the property, and you can see multiple structures.
Yeah.
Uh, we've repurposed a lot of stuff. I mean, we go to the airport and we get these big crates and we, the airport gives us the big crates and we, uh, get plywood from, uh, Pro Metal Products in Delta Township. And we have people come out and build these structures, and they're, uh, you know, for goats and sheep, they're very serviceable. And then we have students come up and paint them, or Montessori kids, or Girl Scouts, or 4H kids, and they paint them, and they're kind of like bright, bright vibrant colors. Most of those pictures are older. They're not exactly current.
Um, Mr. Worthy, you're operating, uh, an animal rescue. Um, just from experience, that's a pretty expensive proposition. How do you raise funds in order to run your operation?
Well, we should have the township sponsors, I guess, but what we do is, um, we, we reach out to local people and local companies, and it took about the first four years for this to be, like I say, it was a hobby, and it took five years to get it to pay for itself, but it's all, uh, donations from people. And we've had donations from, you know, companies like Meyer, like Consumers Energy, um, uh, some corporations, but basically, basically it's small donors that just sends in, send in checks. And, and we do, we have a budget of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So that's the nut. We've got about ten thousand dollars that we need to raise every, um, month. And we do have, uh, like I say, we have at least two, um, festivals each year. We proposed having maybe a goat night with the sheep. We were gonna show the movie Babe, actually in the sheep and goat area. Um, we couldn't work out logistics, so we proposed that. But, um, we, so those are two of our big fundraisers that we have. Um, WILX Channel Ten, they did a, they did a, a telethon for us, and that was very, very successful. And we have a, a lot of foundations. We apply for grants. Uh, Community Foundation has given us money. Um, Meyer Logistics, uh, they just gave us a couple trailers that we use for hay. And it's not my favorite thing, but it, it, it does what I need for hay, because it keeps it dry and it keeps it from molding. And so, um, so what other companies? Are, are we old's foundation? Yeah, we, we have, yeah, a lot of people, uh, donate out of their 401K at, at the end of the year because they can donate to a charity and it, it's tax-free to them. And so, um, we, Giving Tuesday, we just passed Giving Tuesday, and we had a campaign for Giving Tuesday. But any of these festivals we have, it, it, it's, there's a tourism component of it, but it, it's there for fundraising.
Do, do you anticipate ever having an operation like, um, like Moveville?
No.
Or anything like, anything like that?
No, no, we can't. We, like I say, we, we want to be certified by Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries for, just to give us some more credibility and also reach out to more donors. And so they will not let you do that, and we don't want to do that. Yep, uh, we, we, we're, we're not going to try, try to exploit the animals in any way.
Now, I have a question about this, um, photograph with all the, um, the pumpkins and the, um, portapotties. Uh, if you were able to build a barn, um, would most of this be inside the barn?
Um, yes, but they, that's part of the reason for building barn is we'd like to have restrooms inside that are heated. Well, the volunteers who are using it would like that, but, um, we, we would like to have, uh, a couple restrooms inside the barn in a, in a heated space. The pumpkins are there because after Halloween, uh, we get donations of pumpkins from the public, and we also get it from a lot of companies, but we would, they would last longer if we could put them in the barn. So if we could give them, uh, get them out of the elements, it would be perfect, yes, and we would have space to do that.
And then I have one other question. I'm looking at the picture here from your Facebook page with all of, you know, these little dwellings for, um, for various animals. But in the back, that looks like a semi tractor trailer. Um, is that what that is?
It's brand new. It's, it's not the tractor, it's just the trailer. There's two of them. And the one in back by the cows has, it has, uh, six hundred and ten bales of hay in it. So the volunteers can walk back there and they can throw hay into the cows and they don't have to carry it. And, um,
So if you had a barn, would, would you still need the tractor or the trailer?
Well, the goal would be to try to keep it in one central spot. I, I can't say we would definitely get rid of it, but the goal would be to get it in one central spot, and then we would reconfigure our animals so we could, we could, you know, feed them easier. Because we, we want to make it easier for the volunteers, but we're also locked in, um, because we, we need electricity everywhere to keep the water from freezing all winter. So we kind of, y- you know, it would be nice to get it in one spot.
And Peter, could you expand that picture up there to, okay, you've got it. That eighty, eighty-twenty-one. Um, that is a solar farm, is it not?
Over here?
Yeah.
It is.
It is. Did, did that have any effect on the local property values when they, when they built that solar farm there?
I, our taxes didn't go down. I, I don't, I don't think so. No, I, I, no, it didn't depress, didn't do anything for the taxes.
Or the values. I'm talking about the-
For the values. No, I, no, I don't, I, I can't see it.
Any other commissioner comment, questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I get my voice, I got a question. So would you rezonate the whole parcel? What activities do you anticipate in the north, northern portion of the parcel?
Pastures.
Pastures. We, you can't see the, you can only see one of those houses because there's a, a big grove of trees between us and those houses on our property. And we have planted, the one house you can see, we planted supposedly a bunch of fast-growing trees that aren't growing very fast. So you can't see the fourth house, and, um,
No, we have trees on my lining.
Hey, Mr. Worthy, if, if, Victoria, if you want to speak, I would come to the microphone, or they would just get it on the record if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, we, we're, we're surrounded by a, a, a tree, a, a fence row of trees. And actually, there, but between the house to the e- to the east of us, um, there, there's two rows of trees between, uh, their view and, um, our farm. So if, if we move over to the L-shaped parcel, there'll only be one fence row there.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Uh, anybody from the public who would like to speak, uh, on this issue? Please come up to the podium, uh, state your name and your address for the record.
My name's April Morris. I'm at eight-five-eight-one West Mount Hope Highway. I live across the road from the Worthys. Um, I won't reiterate what I put in my note, but they're very good neighbors. They're very responsible. I've known them, uh, they moved there after we did. And I can see their property from our home. I can see it. We have two adjoining pieces of property, as they do. Uh, the photograph is very misleading where it shows the pumpkins, the portapotties. You cannot see that from the road. Um, the field is an open field. This is, uh, this is not a disorganized piece of property. Um, we're very supportive of their intent on, uh, rescuing animals that would otherwise probably be slaughtered. I work throughout Eaton County. I know a lot of people in Eaton County. Uh, the sanctuary is known. The other thing is, it is mind-boggling how many people think, well, we'll, we'll just take the animals somewhere, it'll be fine. Or, you know, uh, we'll just take it to a pig farm somewhere. There aren't a whole lot of places that can rescue, that can offer sanctuary. Uh, either, in my particular case, I see people who are elderly, who can no longer care for the goat they have out back. You know, their, their old horse, Bessie. Uh, these animals have to go somewhere or they're going to be slaughtered. Um, and, uh, the Worthy Sanctuary is a very viable, safe option. They do not exploit these animals. Um, we have been over to the Worthy's property, uninvited and invited numerous times. Uh, if I had concerns, I would certainly say something. Uh, my husband's daughter has worked for PETA for twenty years. She's been over there several times. She has no concerns. As someone who's a vegan, who works for an animal rights organization, she has no concerns about anything over on the property. And we're very supportive of them being able to put a barn, being able to expand the amount of animals that they can rescue. Um, and once again, we've seen this in real time for the last twenty years. Um, and it is surrounded by trees. It's a little difficult to see that, uh, in this drawing, but it's not an open parcel. It is, uh, a, a treeed area, and once again, we can see their front yard. We can see their field from our property. We have no concerns.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mark Jury. Uh, I live at eighty-five-eight-one West Mount Hope Highway, directly across from the Worthys. And there is no smell coming from there. Uh, occasionally I might hear a donkey. Occasionally, not all the time. And they are very responsible people. They take care of these animals to the best of their ability, which is a vague ability. And they have all these, uh, volunteers from MSU, from the MSU Vet School. So they are equipped to take care of these animals. And I just think that this should be allowed.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kelly Thatch, eighty-two fifty Mount Hope Highway. We, well, I'm going to read notes so that I don't ramble, so. Um, my husband and I own the property east of the parcel in question. I sent an email to the planning commission prior to the meeting and hope everybody has had a chance to read it. Um, we believe rezoning could have serious negative consequences for the surrounding homeowners as well as Delta Township residents. The Mount Hope Highway corridor is a beautiful country landscape west of I-96. It's a highly traveled road for residents and commuters as well as visitors visiting and enjoying Mount Hope Park that's less than a mile down the road. The existing sanctuary has porta potties, tents, sheds, little houses and two semi-trailers that support their business. Rezoning from residential to agricultural would allow expansion of all of those things to the adjoining twenty-two acres, negatively impacting the surrounding rural area. Currently, it's somewhat hidden from public view. Um, is this the image that we want Delta Township to have? For these reasons, we urge the planning commission to deny this rezoning request. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
So you're this long parcel, eighty-two fifty, right here?
Correct. We have been there for forty years. Um, prior to that, I was, it was one big property that juts up and around and I have been there since, hmm, over sixty years.
So what do you see now when you look at his?
So right now there is a lane that's a tree line. And where the current sanctuary is, is kind of in a valley, so you can't really see it. I mean, we can see the big white semis and stuff that are parked in the field and we can see the barns and, um, some of the animals, but we can't see like that picture that kind of looked like a campground, I think you called it. We can't see that unless you go past their driveway and you can look down and see that. Um, but like I said, it's in lowland, so expansion would be coming up into a big field where everybody driving by would be able to see whatever they end up putting on it. And being zoned agricultural would basically give them the license to put whatever they want on it as they have so much expanded their current sanctuary over the last ten years.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public who would like to speak to this issue?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions from the commissioners?
Close the public hearing.
Support. Moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So what is the pleasure of the commission?
I think that the planning commission recommends the Delta Township Board of Trustees approval of the request to resolve one twenty-two point zero eight acre unaddressed parcel with this parcel number zero four zero zero two one three zero 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 one eight zero zero, which is located on the north side of West Mount Hope Highway, immediately east of eight-six-five-zero West Mount Hope Highway, from RB, which is Locodycity Residential, to AG two, which is agricultural slash residential for the following reasons of which there are four stated.
Not much do I have support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any additional discussion? Saying done, Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Roll call. Dr. Zansky? Yes, yes. Maryana Proctor?
Yes.
Uh, well then, yes. Wendy Radley?
No.
Mike Metta?
Support.
Mark Mudry?
Yes.
Bob McDonna?
Support.
Rachel Hosinga?
Support.
David Howell?
Support.
Motion passes.
So what's next for them?
Okay, so the planning commission has recommended approval of the rezoning. This will go on to the township board for final action. We'll have a meeting much like we did this evening. However, please note it will not be a public hearing, so there's a different place on the agenda. If you do want to make comments, it'll be at the beginning of the meeting versus during what we have listed here as a public hearing. So I'm anticipating barring something, some big change that I learned about tomorrow, that that will be on next Monday, December fifteenth. Township board agenda, township board meets in this room, different people, same room. And they will consider the rezoning and, um, if they are planning to approve it, would do that in a two-step fashion. So it would be, if it was approved, it would be approved for introduction next Monday night and then they would have one more meeting after that where they would do final adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, next item of business is master plan update.
I'll keep this brief. We continue to work with OHM advisors and recently, um, at least completed a draft. What's that?
I said, we can let them know they.
Yeah, to anyone that's attendance, if you don't want to, we're, we're going to finish our meeting. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave. You don't even have to go home, but. But we're going to move on with our meeting. So if you do leave, if you could just keep the conversation in this room or in the hallway to a very, very low level, it'd be appreciated. So, uh, we continue to work with OHM advisors. We recently had a work session with the team on the goals and objectives that this group talked a lot about. We submitted, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, a lot of edits to the future land use map and during that same work session with the consultant, we're able to iron a lot of those out. They had some questions for us. So, um, there are, there's going to be a little bit of delay for the holidays and their teams kind of, um, taking stock of all the things that we share. We had significant changes to the future land use map from what was given to us by the consultant. So they're updating all of that stuff. They're up and gonna hopefully start getting some drafts of chapters in the new year. At that point, we would schedule another advisory committee or steering committee meeting. So we, there's no date for the next steering committee as of now, but as soon as I learn when they'll be ready for that, we will do it. And really hoping to bring this thing home in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Um, now keep in mind, that's just to get a full draft so that we can start, you know, the steering committee and this group can start to review those, those chapters. And then, you know, we, once we do get a, a draft that's ready for public consumption, I'll say, then we have to put notices out and we go through this sixty-three day kind of public hearing process where it's up to the public for comment. And then eventually we come back for this group to sign off and then for ultimately the board. So a lot of moving pieces in between that, but I feel we're, we're maintaining good momentum. We're getting, uh, what I think is going to be a good product and addressing issues now versus down the road. So stay tuned. I'll just keep this group updated. And for those on the steering committee, just keep an eye on your email and I'll, I'll let you know when the next meeting is.
And Peter, is, is it every ten years, correct?
Well, we're supposed to review, yeah, the master plan is supposed to be completed every ten years, so we're fairly delinquent on that. For, I mean, through a variety of extenuating circumstances to a certain extent.
So the ten years will get reset to whatever day it's the final.
Whenever it gets adopted. But we have to review it every five.
Good.
So it doesn't even need to change it. We just need to at least say, oh, we reviewed it. It's perfect. No changes. Which, you know, and, and then.
It's not changed.
Yeah. What I've been saying to myself and to the, to the, our consultant, and I mean, I want to reiterate it here is I feel like this plan, you know, it, no plan is ever perfect and I just, well, I have to kind of live in that. But the, it, it is going to create a new baseline for us. So because it has been so long, we have the twenty thirteen plan that just isn't as, I mean, it's all valuable and it's all for informational purposes, but this is going to kind of set a new baseline for us. And it's going to be easier moving forward to update it. So if everything isn't perfect in this draft, and I don't want to say that we're not going to have really good, high-quality work in this draft and it's not a knock on our staff or the consultant. I mean, it's just probably reality. It's not, it's not going to please everybody. So, but we will have a chance to, to amend those or maybe flesh some things out in future updates.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, a lot of what's going on with the steering committee, the reviews and that sort of thing is bringing it down to the level of Delta Township specifically. The consultants, of course, start out with basically a template, uh, with kind of generic titles and names. So we've spent a lot of time bringing those into language which fits to Delta Township. Uh, better fit some of the dynamics between the neighborhoods and the businesses and that kind. So it's making it more, more, more meaningful in this specific site.
Yep. So thanks for everyone's patience on that.
Hey, we have no more public left, so there are no public comments. Any additional comments from you, Peter?
Uh, the only thing I'll add is, uh, best wishes to Dave Olivero. So Dave moved off to, started his new job today. I think the girls may have talked to him. Um, I'm assuming everything went fine. But, um, so it's just us for now. We do have a job ad out on the streets right now and for another associate planner. So hope to get some interest in that and we'll keep you apprised as we go. The biggest thing probably is this is your last meeting of the year. So you meet again on January twelfth. We are teeing up. At this point, it sure looks like we're going to have a public hearing on this proposed Raising Canes development. So that's at the northwest corner of West Agonon Elmwood, on an undeveloped piece. It's owned by the mall that would lease to Raising Canes and they're going to develop like the southern half of it. So that if you know where the mall sign is and the trees that are on the mall sign, they're planning on tearing some of those trees, uh, trees down, full disclosure. And building the Raising Canes. It'll have a double drive-through that will come through the front of the site. We've been working with them on access and I've engaged with Eaton County Road Commission on access to the site, which is going to be challenging. And I'll have a staff memo that'll kind of lay out all the potential challenges that we might see. Not to say that there will be a lot, but I mean, it's a, you know, an intense use on a popular corner, so we've got a plan for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Peter. You're right. So it's the Eaton County Road Commission that kind of helps craft where the entrance and exits are off of Saginaw in this.
Uh, maybe not so much craft, but they react to the plan and provide comment. Yeah.
Do the township take the initial lead on?
Yes.
Establishing and then presents it on the.
Yeah, so I have opinions and I'm, I, I share them with the road commission. We, together, we review the traffic study that they provide. And then we look at their plan and we kind of think, you know, I've, I've been going out to that site to see where the snow gets plowed, for example.
Yeah.
Because the snow gets plowed and right in the area where they want to put their restaurants.
Is there an entrance or exit, uh, through the parking lot that's behind that space?
Right now, the, the proposed access would be a new right-in, right-out entrance on Elmwood. So those traveling south on Elmwood would have an easy right-in, right-out to the development. If you think of the traffic patterns in that area, the volume of traffic is not traveling south on Elmwood.
No.
It's on West Saginaw. So that is a concern of mine and I have been very transparent with the development team about my concerns about Elmwood. Um, mostly that, I mean, much like anyone that came to this meeting tonight, it is scary to me to come into this site sometimes because there is no dedicated left. So you find yourself alone and crying in the left turn lane and people behind you honking their horn and no kind of easy way into the site. Frankly, I mean, it works, somehow it works. But it, we also don't have a double dive, double drive-through offering, you know, three AM chicken fingers.
Right.
So it's.
So it's not feasible.
Totally different site. So, I mean, and one of the challenges on Elmwood, just to tell you now, is, you know, there is no dedicated left to get a little bit up further to where the Best Buy is right now. So anyone that is trying to kind of skirt the rules and if we're all in the area, there are a lot of kind of right-in, right-out, left-in, left-out entrances on West Saginaw that don't always function that way. Cars have wheels.
They don't.
They have turning radiator. Uh, they can get around those. People abuse them. The worst-case scenario is an Elmwood that has backed up traffic
Yep.
that the people are trying to get into this site. Now, there are other access points to the site, to the mall. But I mean, kind of just the path least resistance where we think they're going to go in also is problematic because a lot of people might turn in and they might go right into Panera or they might find themselves in the Verizon parking lot and say, I gotta turn around. Go back out and go back in. So we're, I'm daylighting all those issues to the development team. I never want to have kind of combative relationship when they get here. So tell them everything, all the issues we're having. I am working with Matt Hannas of Eaton County to just make sure that we're looking in detail at that study and that they're, you know, what's warranted is going to work. And we'll have more, that's still, um, still in development. So he's going to come back to us with a final determination before that public hearing.
So it's not feasible to put a in and out that goes through the parking lot?
It may or may not. I mean, that's, we, we have to determine if it's justified in their traffic study and if we think that the road, surrounding road network and kind of the expectations of our traffic in that area are going to be all met. I mean, my gut is telling me no right now, but.
Hold on. Yeah, we don't want to create.
So we'll, 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 we'll go over all those issues, um, but we'll have some, some good knowledge and, um, behind that when we do bring it to you.
Thank you.
Sorry, long answer. I won't see you during the holidays, so I gotta get all.
Hey, any additional comments from any of the commissioners? Saying done, motion to adjourn.
I move.
Support.
Adjourn. Off the record.
Energetically.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Safe holiday, enjoy family, friends.